Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Saco City Council to order for Monday, November 22, 2021. The time is 6:31. With that, I'd like to note that all the city council is present with the exception of Council Archer, who was excused, and we also have the city administrator present. At this time, I'd like to invite all of you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of this country, to one nation, and to the unity of all who live and die for our cause.
Thank you very much. Brings us to item four of the agenda under General. We have two items, but I will be adding a third item here to start with. Unfortunately, this was not on the agenda as it just happened, but I would like you all to join us in a moment of silence as Art Tardif passed away. A friend, a colleague, a long-term city council member, school board member, and police officer with our community. Our hearts go out to his family during these tragic times. So please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Up next is item A, Recognizing Lung Cancer Awareness Month. November is Lung Cancer Awareness Month, whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States and in Maine in 2021, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas according to the Maine Center for Disease Control and Prevention, there were 1,396 new lung cancer cases and 920 deaths because of lung cancer in 2017 in Maine. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 59%, yet only 17% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. And whereas screening for lung cancer for high-risk individuals using low-dose computed tomography can lead to earlier detection of lung cancer and save lives, reducing the mortality by 20% when compared to screening by chest X-ray in the National Lung Screening Trials, and reducing the risk of death at 10 years by 24% in men and 33% in women, as demonstrated by another large randomized trial. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trails far behind funding for research of many other cancers, and additional research is needed for early diagnosis, screening, and treatment for lung cancer, as well as in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, each year more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer, and by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas African-Americans have the highest lung cancer incidence and mortality of all races, and disparities in lung cancer screening, diagnosis, treatment, and mortality are well-characterized among African-Americans and other racial minorities. And whereas lung cancer and never-smokers is the seventh leading cause of cancer, related death accounts for 17,000 to 26,000 deaths in the U.S. every year. 60% to 70% of never-smokers diagnosed with lung cancer are women, and the proportion of lung cancers diagnosed in never-smokers is increasing in the U.S. And whereas organizations working in the Saco communities, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increase lung cancer screening rates in Saco. Therefore, I, Mayor William Doyle, on behalf of the Saco City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Saco and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Signed this day of November 2021. Thank you very much. Item B is a quick update on Contract Zone Moratorium. It was, this is the opinion of the city solicitor. There's a conclusion that Section 210 of the Charter does allow for the bringing of emergency ordinances to council the night of a meeting, and without such matter having previously been on the agenda, there is an express provision authorizing this process. However, the verbiage of Section 2.10 also requires that the actual proposed emergency ordinance have been drafted and provided to council that night, at the very least, for its review. Because the council acted by vote without having met this condition, the enactment that night violates the Charter and is annulity. This is an opinion, and the council is not required to abide by it, but were there a Contract Zone Amendment Moratorium challenged, it would most likely, a court would also, excuse me, I would note it was, it most likely a court would also find its enactment a violation of Charter and thus void. That brings us to item five of the agenda, and that is Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Counselor Berman, then Counselor Hatch, then Counselor McPhail. Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last weekend, the Saco Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee held their annual Cranks Giving Event, in which food is pedaled from Hannaford Supermarket to the Saco Food Pantry. Although the participants were few, the effort was mighty. We brought a good deal of food, including some donated by Hannaford Supermarkets, to the Saco Food Pantry, which was very appreciative. It was a great event.
Thank you. Counselor Hatch.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. On Saturday morning, November 13, age-friendly Saco, in conjunction with the Saco Public Works Department and the Thornton Academy Interact Club, filled and distributed dozens of free sand buckets to area senior citizens for use in their walkways and driveways over the winter months. I want to publicly recognize all involved for this very thoughtful effort for our community.
Thank you. Counselor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Saturday was the preview gala for the Festival of Trees at the Dyer Library. We had a wonderful turnout for the afternoon tea, as well as the evening gala. And just a reminder that the community-open part of the Festival of Trees starts this Friday, the 26th, and runs through December 29th. We also have some wonderful raffle items, and when you stop in, you can purchase tickets to put in for the raffle. And the last day for the raffle is December 16th. And then also just a reminder that this Saturday is Small Business Saturday. The Saco Scoop again will be doing Saco Bucks, which you can pick up at the Scoop from 10 to 1, and they will be good for the 12 days of shopping. Also, while at the Scoop picking those up, make sure to get your letters to Santa. We do have the mailbox set up again, and that will be through mid-December so that your children can write letters and get them sent in.
Thank you. Any further committee correspondence to council? I'd just like to note, one thing that I missed under General is a huge congratulations to the Thornton Academy football team for not only having an undefeated season, but also going on and becoming Class A state champions. So let's give them a round of applause. Also of note is the Saco Parks and Rec held a food, a food program handout on last Thursday, and it was a great success, serving over 300 people in our community. And the food vendor for their program was the Rizziakas family of Golden Roosters. So thank you very much to them, and thank you very much to Saco Parks and Rec for putting that program together and keeping it going. Any further committee correspondence? Okay, moving on. Item six is public comment. We have three folks that have signed up for public comment. First up is Jane Karen. Those folks coming up to the podium, you can remove your mask to speak into the microphone. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street, Ward 5, here in Saco. And thank you all for your time this evening. The City of Saco has zoning ordinances, and everyone knows it's so important to carefully and respectfully honor the work and efforts that go into zoning review. One area that has been discussed over the years, and more recently, is contract zones and how they affect growth and development in the city. More specifically, it's the number of contract zones that continue to present challenges for the city, the planning board, the council, and the community in Saco. This is a citywide issue, and a review of contract zones is needed. I request the mayor and the city administrator to please place the topic of contract zones on the city council agenda for review and discussion by the city councilors and the opportunity for a public hearing regarding contract zones. I request this agenda topic be placed as a priority item for action sooner than later. And again, I thank you for your time, and I wish you and your families a safe and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. Up next is Jeff Broschew.
I'm Jeff Broschew. I reside at 257 Buxton Road. I was, I'm here tonight to speak in support of Counselor Hatch's motion to put a moratorium on the contract zones. I served on the planning board during the time of the zoning revision ordinance, and that was one of the driving forces, one of the major bullets when we started that process, was that there was what seemed like an overuse of contract zoning. And the mission was to try to decrease the number of zones that we had within the city to clarify, simplify the process for people who might be interested in conducting business within our town, and to really make it a unified document so that we wouldn't need to exercise that kind of last-ditch approach to have a contract zone. And if I recall, I couldn't find the exact numbers, it was around almost 50 that we're coming up to existing contract zones. So I really, it sounds like there might be a little bit of legal issue with the original motion that was made and the vote that was taken, and I strongly encourage you to revisit that imminently so that we could have the time. I'd even go so far as to kick it out from 61 days to maybe 90 days. Reason being is, there needs to be enough time for not only the council, but the planning board and staff to vet this process. As a member of the planning board, I'd see it so often, we would get to a problem in the ZORS committee, ZORS process, and it would kind of be put to the side. Okay, well, that's a bigger piece of the pie, we can't tackle it right now, we'll put it to the side. Well, the good news is, the City of Saco is just a booming place right now, and there are so many applications coming in. We're doing multiple meetings, meetings that were above and beyond the two that were normally prescribed in a month. So I think if you could take that time, maybe even go so far as to say, no subdivision review at all, no residential, just take the time and address these issues, contract zones. There was a lot of things that were left on the table during my time, as far as signs, parking, lighting, and then the big one, master plan development, huge. We were the first ones to go through a master plan development application in a number of years, and we found some very large gaps needed to be addressed. To my knowledge, hasn't been addressed at this point. And that is a very dangerous tool that's left out there that should really be focused on. It wasn't a very good representation of the city for the applicant, nor was it a very easy process for those of us trying to serve our city, working through the ordinance as it's drafted. So if we could really focus on getting these things done very soon, I think would be a great benefit to our community, and possibly looking into a timeline before the issue can be brought back up again. I know this is an item on the agenda this evening for something that was brought up in the ZORS committee process in 2000, it was in December of 2019. So here it is, two years later, and you're looking at the same thing for the industrial plaque. Now, it's our right to appeal and try to do this, but let's try to streamline the volunteers that are serving on these boards that are getting overwhelmed with these applications that are constantly coming through, and coming through for the same purpose. So, you know, at this point, the sad part is, is that we've done this massive zoning revision process. We know that there are items that were left unaddressed, and now over half of the members of the planning board that were aware of those items are no longer serving, either by choice or by appointment. So I would strongly, strongly appeal to you to please, at the very least, make this a formal motion in an approved manner, and hold off on the contract zones so that we can bide the time that's needed to review this and make it a legitimate, non-reactive process. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Up next is Inga Brown.
Hi, good evening. I'm Inga Brown. I live at 161 Simpson Road in Ward 1. Two weeks ago, the city council took a major step forward for our community in passing an emergency resolution for a 61-day moratorium on contract zones in the City of Saco. This clear and bold action is a long time in coming. Regardless of tonight's process update on the legal minutia of the moratorium's validity, the majority of council on November 8 voted in favor of this moratorium, and I urge city administrator Keenrath and Mayor Doyle to place it back on the next council agenda. Councilors Archer, McPhail, Hatch, and Johnston, your votes on Counselor Hatch's resolution demonstrate that you are fully, that you fully recognize the broken state of the contract zoning provision in our ordinance, and you are demanding change. Likewise, Counselor Berman, at the August 9 council meeting, under another Contract Zone Amendment approval, you stated, and I'm gently paraphrasing, that contract zones to some in our community feel like the council is picking winners and losers or playing favorites, and you openly recognize some of the shortcomings of the CZA process. In 2018, 32 active contract zones were identified by the Saco Contract Zone Analysis Project, led by Economic Development Director Denise Clavett and two city interns, a project that was supposed to move the needle forward with some action items and reform. Ms. Clavett wrote in 2018, "Are there uncomplicated Saco zoning ordinance amendments that can be recommended for approval that could essentially reduce the number of existing contract zones?" That work, that analysis, and that potential progress were put back in the bottle, up on the shelf. Approval of CZAs continued under our erratic, vague, sometimes contentious, and often inequitable process, brokered by political wins. As you were reminded on November 8, two out of our four standards that must be used by the planning board in its review of contract zones and should be used by council are significantly flawed, and attorney Natalie Burns reminded you on the planning board that the language is problematic and fully subjective language, specifically for Standards A and D, and I will not torture us by reading those two standards out loud now. A 61-day pause, a halt on all new contract zone applications affords council and staff, along with constituents and public meetings, time to review, tighten, reform, and improve the zoning process. And above all else, this process must be used cautiously, sparingly, and appropriately, as Natalie Burns also reminded you on November 8. Our hopscotch checkerboard use of contract zones is devoid of any uniform or systematic correlation to our comprehensive plan, and Saco is the weaker for it. We shoehorn a project here, we shoehorn a project there, and the end result is a lack of stability, confidence, and security in our zoning ordinance. A reformed contract zone ordinance needs structures and constraints in place to ensure that they will be used sparingly, with financial responsibility of this arduous city process, one that includes administration, documentation, ongoing project and conditions review, and post-execution full compliance review. It should be resting on the shoulders of the applicants and the recipients, not on the backs of taxpayers. We couldn't get that more backward if we tried. The emergency moratorium proposed by Counselor Hatch is measured, logical, and he's calling for a careful and intentional process that will include a razor-close review and improvement to our contract zone ordinance. We simply cannot go on with a broken system for which the city cannot maintain accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last of the folks that have signed up. If there's anyone that would like to address the city council, please come forward and be heard. See nobody coming forward. That brings us on to item seven, approval of the minutes for October 15, 22, and November 8. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, we need to change those. I believe it is October 18 and the 25.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Any discussion on the minutes? Counselor Hatch?
Mayor Doyle, I would have to abstain from voting on the minutes of the 25th. I was not present at that meeting, so I will vote on the other two that I was present at, but I was not present October 25.
Counselor Hatch, were you able to, did you receive the minutes for the 25th?
I received them and reviewed them, yes.
Did you have a chance to review those thoroughly?
I did.
Counselor, is there any objection to Counselor Hatch voting on the minutes? There's no objection. Counselor Hatch, if you'd like to vote on the minutes, you can do so.
I will do so.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes further? Roll call vote on the minutes. Counselor Purdy.
Yes.
Counselor Gunn.
Yes.
Counselor Berman.
Yes.
Counselor Hatch.
Yes.
Counselor McPhail.
Yes.
Counselor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. There are no consent items under Agenda Item 8. That brings us to Agenda Item 9, action items. There's a first reading, Order of Discontinuance of Gull Avenue Public Easement, which was going to be read by Counselor Berman. However, Counselor McPhail will be reading that this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gull Avenue was deemed abandoned by the city council back in 1989. At that time, the city voted to retain a public easement for purposes of beach access. Following the 1989 vote, the abutting landowners exercised greater control over the area comprising the former right-of-way, and eventually structures and a driveway came to be placed into former right-of-way. The two abutting owners are requesting the city terminate all rights, the remaining public access easement across the former Gull Ave right-of-way. Given the location and the lack of nearby parking, as well as the beach access provided by nearby Bayview and the Ferry Beach State Park, city staff believes there is no compelling reason to keep this public access easement. The statutory process, see 23 MRS, Section 3026, attached as Exhibit 2, to discontinue a public easement requires the council hold an initial meeting to consider the matter. If the council determines that a discontinuance is warranted, it will sign the proposed order of discontinuance. It must also decide if any abutter is owed damages and/or compensation as a result. A subsequent public hearing should then be scheduled. The discontinuance process would terminate any future maintenance obligations, as well as any public access rights to cross the subject parcel of land. It would result in an increase in the taxable value of both abutters' lots by removing the public easement and by allowing that corresponding amount of beach frontage to be fully owned and assigned to the lot owners. For this reason, the staff recommends the council award $0 in damages for the discontinuance. The map of the parcels' right-of-way is attached as Exhibit 3. Also, please take note that the city, likely in error, listed Gull Ave as a paper street in 2017. See Exhibit 4. Either the city had failed to recall the 1989 vote, or it concluded that it still needed to list Gull Ave as a so-called paper street because of the retained public easement. In either case, this action removes all claims of right or interest. Be it ordered that the city council approve the order of discontinuance of Gull Ave public easement, and that it awards no damages as described therein, and to set the public hearing for this order on December 6, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail to set the public hearing for December 6. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Gunn. Counselor Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of concerns with this motion. In addition to some confusion about the status of the initial vote to abandon the road and the continued listing of Gull Ave as a paper street in 2017, I would note there are a number of other such roads also. I think it's premature for the city to abandon its easement until the status of these roads are clarified. In addition, public access to the beach has been a hot topic in Maine and in Saco for some time. This easement in the 1989 vote was explicitly taken to ensure the public retained access to this stretch of beach. I think that is a reason to continue the city easement. And finally, I would note that there are a number of neighboring streets. It's not just Gull Avenue that's in this situation, but also Garnet in Utah, and Delhi, and Long Pond, that really fit into this exact same category. The only difference is that the abutters in this situation have built over the easement and have now requested a discontinuance of it. But it seems unfair to give the landowners back the property without easement in this case, and not also in the neighboring cases. And thus, I feel they should be dealt with and considered together, and not in isolation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Any further discussion? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I think Counselor Berman pretty much summarized my thoughts from several weeks ago on this matter. I mean, I think that the action from 1989 was pretty clear, and I'm certainly in the same camp with regards to access to our beaches. And again, along the same lines, I think if we're going to do this at all, it should be a global approach to that whole area, as there's at least four or five others that fit the same, or at least similar, situation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Any further discussion on this matter? Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. I'm going to vote to move this forward to the public hearing simply because I want to hear any public comment that might be made on it. I haven't made up my mind on this, and there was new information this afternoon that I haven't had a chance to read, so, but I will move, I will vote to move it forward simply, simply so we can hear from the public on the matter.
Thank you. Any further, Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. If this is to move forward the public hearing and then back to us, the only question I have that remains is, could the assessor's office provide us with an actual valuation of what this easement, or removing this easement, was actually put back on the tax rolls, since as part of this packet, it makes it seem like it may be significant, and I have no understanding of how much that may be. So if it comes back to us, please have it. So, if it comes back to us, please have that available. Thank you.
We have the assessing department in here tonight, but rather than put them on the spot, we'll make sure the information is available at the next meeting if necessary. Any further discussion? Roll call, vote? Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Hatch?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
No.
I believe that is a 3-3 tie. I will vote yes just simply to make it go forward and hear from the public. So therefore, passes 4-3. Item 10, New Business. We have a couple of presentations. Item A is the Ecology School presentation. For all the presenters that come forward, please feel free to take off your mask to actually present the information and remember just to speak directly into the microphone so that everybody can hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Happy Thanksgiving to you, Mayor Doyle, and City Administrator Kenrath, and to the entire council. I do have copies of... Emily, I did not see it popping up here.
Don't worry, the communications director is going to come down and help you.
She helped me before, so. Do I need to click it in again? Okay. Oh, so, okay, it doesn't automate?
Should. There it is. So maybe you can select which screen. Did you click on the little black box?
I'm trying. I'm trying again. Oh, you clicked here.
There it is. So click on one of those.
Click this?
Yep, click on that.
Okay. This?
Ah.
Great, thank you.
It's always good to have friends that know how to operate technology.
Well, thinking I want to thank City Administrator Kenrath and Mayor Doyle for inviting me to come back. My name is Drew Dumbs. I'm the President and CEO of the Ecology School at 184 Simpson Road. I am also a resident in Ward 2 at Ford None Such Road. The Ecology School has been transitioning to its new campus at Riverbend Farm over the past six years, so given that we officially had our ribbon cutting back near Earth Day and have been doing programs since then, I thought it'd be a good idea to come back and give an update on where we are, especially since five out of the seven council are newer to the project and we're not involved in the process of Contract Zone and also Planning Board. So first slide, just a quick snapshot of what Riverbend Farm is. We're out on Simpson Road, a beautiful 105-acre farm. Our farmhouse where our offices are now in is from 1794, an 1840s barn. The majority of the property is held under Maine Farmland Trust easement. We have a 36-room, 144-bed dormitory, the Poland Spring Education and Dining Commons, which includes an all-electric commercial kitchen, one of the few in the United States of that size. And that kitchen and the dorm are all powered with 712 solar power panels that produce over 300 and 30,000 kilowatt-hours a year, equivalent to about 60 homes. Also, we went, started our farm production this year, and on our three-acre production farm field harvested over 5,000 pounds of vegetables, and more than half of that went to actually local food pantries. So with the relationship between the City of Saco and the Ecology School, I was part of the founders back in 1998 who founded the Ecology School right in Saco. And over the past 23-year history, we have had a long history working with Saco schools. In fact, our current Speaker of the House, Ryan Facto, was a 5th grade student at C.K. Burns and did an overnight program at the Ecology School when we were at our rented Ferry Beach site. As a snapshot of what we've been doing in 2021, our work with Saco school programs was varied this fall. We worked with 3rd grade, 6th grade, and 7th grade classes, all those classes this fall, plus we also offered outreach for 5th grade school programs and hosted 8th grade classrooms, both in remote classes, but then they came onsite and actually helped out with some of the farming tasks. We also, the Ecology School, our curriculum team serves an advisory role for the Saco schools. We also hosted Superintendent Jeremy Ray and the Saco Schools leadership team at a retreat at our Dining Commons. We also helped fully fund scholarships for Saco teachers to attend our National Teacher Institute for Watershed Science and Conservation back in August. We had also in August over 225 Saco Park and Rec campers attend field trips at the Ecology School, and we're excited that the Saco Middle School STEM team will be coming for a multi-day residential program in the spring. Snapshot of recent media coverage and state and federal initiatives. We've been recognized in Maine Magazine, Maine Biz Magazine, the Governor's Maine Won't Wait Initiative that hopes to have our state be climate-neutral by 2040. We're actually doing that 19 years early. We're a climate-neutral community, working with 31 Maine schools, actually 66 total schools throughout New England. Also, some of our wider initiatives, the green buildings that we built, the Dining Hall and Commons, were the first living building challenge buildings built in the state. I like to say that Living Building Challenge is LEED certification times 100. It's the most rigorous green building certification in the world. And we were able to do that working with solid Maine companies, Zachow Construction, Hancock, Lumber, Maine Architects. We also, I already mentioned, our National Teacher Institute. We had 17 different states represented, teachers from around the country for a full week at the Ecology School. Also, the Ecology School has been leading the charge in a new federal legislation called No Child Left Inside that Senator Collins is co-sponsoring and will help fund programs in Maine and in Saco. And also, we'll be hosting the National Residential Environmental Learning Center Summit in January over the MLK weekend. In terms of moving ahead with the City of Saco, we look forward to continuing our partnership programs. A few I'd like to definitely point out, and a nod to Counselor Johnston recommending during our Contract Zone process, the building of the Mary Merrill Trail, which was successfully opened just a few weeks ago in partnership with Saco Bay Trails, Saco Conservation Commission, and Saco Parks and Rec. And then the Ecology School provided $10,000 to construct parking for that facility or that trailhead. Our farming program, Agroecology for Resilient Communities, will include high school internships for local students and training on local food systems. We will continue to work with the Saco schools, working both on curriculum, working with teachers, and then also continue to offer programs in partnership with other great organizations such as MOFC, Maine Farmland Trust, Maine Audubon, University of New England, and the White Pine Programs. At this point, I'd like to introduce one of our board members, Kathy Goodwin. Kathy has a long history in civics and government in southern Maine. She chaired the York County, or she ran the York County Chamber of Commerce and also ran Senator Collins' Office in Bedford. And she's going to talk a little bit about a challenge we're facing. One reason we're here tonight is asking for the City of Saco's help in a left-hand turn lane construction on Route 112. Kathy?
Yeah. In a minute. Because I'm not good. I will not touch the computer. Hello, everyone. Thank you. Yes, I'm Kathy Goodwin. I am an almost-five-year member of the board for the Ecology School, and we're very proud of all of the work that we've accomplished, all of the kids who have been through what we've been able to do, particularly for the kids in Saco and for families. And now with the Merrill Trail open, we anticipate a lot more activity out at the farm. For those of you, I'm going to walk you back in time just a little bit. For those of you who weren't here before, this is, by the way, our 29th public meeting with Saco on this project, and it has been quite an experience for all of us. We know you well, and we have appreciated the support we've had in getting to where we are today. You know, it doesn't happen in a vacuum. It takes all of us to make these kinds of things happen. So back in 2018, 2019, we were finalizing the conditions of approval, and one of those conditions, condition number nine, was that we would work with the city and the Maine Department of Transportation to create a left turn lane off Route 112 onto Simpson The language is very specific in this, and it's in front of you. You have a copy there. It specifically says, "The applicant will work with the City of Saco and the Maine Department of Transportation to design and construct a left-turn treatment as warranted at the Simpson-Buxton Road intersection." You also have next to that a drawing. So when we agreed to this condition, we immediately went to work and hired ransom engineering for $30,000 to come up with an early draft of what this turn lane might look like. This is just a drawing. It is not the project. There is no project at this point, and this is where we bumped into a bit of a wall. We've been working with the Department of Transportation to see if we could work forward on a business partnership initiative. In that initiative, the partners would be MDOT, the City of Saco, and the Ecology School. And it is likely, if we were to get that, that the Maine DOT would pay 50% of the cost. We would pay 25%, and the city would pay 25%. However, we can't initiate that. The Department of Transportation is requiring that the application come from your board. And so we're asking you tonight to authorize city staff to work with us to initiate the application so that we can move this forward. If this road is so dangerous, and we agree it is, we need to do this sooner rather than later. For every delay, there's more opportunity for a tragic accident, a bus accident, et cetera. So we think it's seriously important that we do what the condition says to work with you to finalize this. Now, when you start the application process, it doesn't commit you to the final dollars. It starts the dialogue, and we get there over time. So this is a process. So we would love tonight to have you agree to move this forward. The second page shows the constraints. Thank you. The constraints we are under right now in the number of turns that we can make off 112 onto Simpson Road. You'll note in the highlighted yellow area, if you can see it, between the hours of 5:00 and 6:00 p.m., we are not allowed one single car to turn onto Simpson Road. Now that the Mary Merrill Trail is open, that has changed our situation quite a bit because we are not going to be able to control the public coming out there. We won't know when they're coming out there. They're just going to drive out, park in the parking lot, and hit the trail. So we also would ask that this funding mechanism and these turns and so on are updated to allow for the fact that the public is likely to want to come out to those trails. And so, again, we can't control that. So we have these two issues, the need to get the project going, and then how we deal with it in the interim as it's going forward. So we hope you will see our dilemma and help us work our way through this. It's very important. I'm going to turn it back over to Drew. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you, and congratulations on all the good things that are going on here.
Thank you, Kathy. And with Kathy's experience, she's been involved with business partner initiatives and other initiatives that have helped garner both state and federal funding. One thing I do want to point out, as part of that Clause 9 in our conditions for approval, it does ask that we follow what's called an innovative traffic management plan. And those parts of it that are within our control, such as facilitating carpooling with program participants, installing bike racks, we have two electric car charging stations, we stagger our arrival times, that has all been followed to a T because it's within our control. So as Kathy said, getting the city's help to follow through with the business partner initiative would be really helpful. The other thing we really need your help with now is, as part of the conditions of approval, we have basically wrapped up all our construction just within the last few weeks, and that was part of the letter of credit that we currently have with the City of Saco. The challenge is that the left-hand turn lane was also included under the letter of credit, and it's been such a complicated situation trying to figure out the best way forward. We have brought tonight our city attorney, Phil Saucier. Some of you are familiar with him because of the complexity of this project, and as Kathy said, we've had, this is our 29th municipal meeting. Bringing Phil in to help walk through the challenges we're having currently, having our, a big chunk of money, in fact, it's $225,000 locked up with the left-hand turn lane. So, Phil?
Thank you very much. Thanks for having me. Phil Saucier with Bernstein Shore. I've been working with the school since the beginning on their land use approvals here in the city, so a couple of you were on that originally when I was first back here, a number of years ago. So I just want to briefly follow up on the last two comments on the left turn lane and the challenge, the additional challenge of not moving forward as having for the school. First is, as you'll see the top of the screen there, the Planning Board amended the site plan approval back in 2020 and put a time limit on the construction. So it currently says May 1, 2022. So that's a deadline that's in there. They would either have to be for a further amendment or to begin working with the city in the state right away, because that's in there. And as I was purely read to you, that condition does require that the school to work with the city and the state. It was a joint partnership. It left open, and this is the second point I was asked to sort of talk about today, is this letter of credit, or financial guarantees, it's called here, is that that left turn lane was purposely left open because the construction and the design obviously needed to input from the city and the state, was not prepared at that time, was not part of the site plan approval, did not show up on any plan that the Planning Board approved. It is a condition of approval, so they'll have to do that at some point. But what the condition said was that the three parties are going to work together, left open the financing, the design, and the construction, understanding that maybe there would be something like a BPI, which obviously the school's... there would be something like a BPI, which obviously the school has been working with the DOT on, but requires the city as a partner. So that's been one of the challenges. For whatever reason, there was a number, $225,000, that was added to the performance guarantee requirement, arguably not required. What your ordinance says is that any site improvements are required. That was not sketched out. It wasn't, you know, it was maybe a back-of-the-envelope number, but it was highly unusual to include that. It's becoming a problem for the school because, as Drew just said, they're about to wrap up the last bit of, except for the 225 is about to be released for the construction costs, but this 225 is having to sit and wait, which is tying up capital for the school. So we think two things. One, there should not be a letter of credit for this until the design, it's been designed, improved, and an actual number of what it's going to cost and how the finance is going to work. Or at a minimum, it should be reduced to something that would be more in line, what they would probably be contributing. So that's, I just, we just want to highlight that continuing problem with the delay in this is this letter of credit issue. Thank you.
Just want to thank you all for giving the update on where we're at, the successes we've had, but also this challenge with the left-hand turn lane. I don't know if it's appropriate to take any questions or clarifications at this time.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for any one of the presenters? Counselor Berman?
Yes, thank you. That was very informative. Congratulations on all the accolades and media you've won. That's really, that's really great for Saco. It's great for you. It's great for the state. It's great for all of us. So congratulations on all that. I did want to follow up on these, the traffic flow and, I guess, warrant volumes. One of the challenges presented, you said, was the Mary Merrill Trail and that the public is using it in any hours at any time, which makes it hard to meet those numbers. As I read the language that you've provided, I don't have the original site plan under, it says, "The applicant shall amend its programming to ensure that vehicle trips generated by the Ecology School stay under warrant volumes." I guess arguably, it seems to me, public trips to the Mary Merrill Trail are not Ecology School trips, they're Saco Bay Trails trips, and they certainly can't be affected by your programming. Do you, are you under the impression that those trips count against your warrant volumes and should be credited to those? Are those kind of separate trips, I guess is my question?
Well, I guess this may be during the spot checks that are now required under the deferral. Are the people sitting in the lawn chair at the end of our driveway going to ask if those people are coming to the Ecology School or the Mary Merrill Trail? Let's see, we'd have to do to discern that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'd be remiss if I didn't make this general comment. I'm reading the condition of approval, number nine. I trust it's verbatim, so I'm not questioning that at all. But it seems to be sort of open-ended, no specific references, as you have indicated, to funding, to design, and I think that's part of the problem with our contract zones in general. I would like to ask specifically, when this condition was negotiated, how did you expect that to be paid for? What was the original budgeted expectation?
Well, the original, and this was already, I mean, I was very active in the councils at that time, including Mayor Doyle, talking about how we might, and we were already looking into the business partnership initiative. At that point, our civil engineer threw out the number 300,000. We know construction's gone up, but that's where the, if it was 300,000 and we were going to split it 50-50 if there was no business partnership initiative with the city, that's where you get to 225. That'd be 150,000 from the Ecology School at the 150% value for performance guarantee. So that's where the 225, and it kind of was just stuck at the end of the performance guarantee sheet.
So there was this lingering expectation that the city would participate in funding this?
That was the hope, and the challenge is, Counselor Hatch, that things like CMP pole removal, right-away issues, as a nonprofit, it's very challenging for us to do that. Whereas the City of Saco and the main Department of Transportation, if we're partnering with them, issues such as possible CMP moving, any right-away issue on, say, the ditch, those are things that can be worked through much more expeditiously than we would have to do if we were the sole developer.
All right. Thank you for that. And then I guess one of the other issues is managing of the traffic flow, and I think Counselor Berman has made his point. So I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Counselor Purdy?
Thank you. Just to clarify, the total project cost for the left-hand turn lane is estimated at, what, $300,000?
Originally, the last time we did an estimate, it doubled to 600. But some of that builds in, like, how many poles will need to be removed? If main DOT requests the pole removal, there's no cost.
Okay. So, and that estimate was from when?
Fall of 2019.
Thank you.
And that, the plan you saw was in February of 2020. So we actually, I was inactive, reaching out to the city in February 2020 to move this along, and then COVID hit. And then we expended quite a bit of political time dealing with the $40,000 in free program that we do for Saco. So we came back to deal with that amendment, which was COVID-related. So this, I'm pointing this out, it's just like, we were not sitting on our hands, not dealing with this. COVID kind of put that on the backseat, so.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. My question's really for you, Mr. Mayor, or the administrator. I feel like there's a lot to really unpack here, and I don't know about the rest, Counsel, but I certainly wasn't prepared to have this delivered this way tonight.
We are not looking for a vote tonight. This is clearly a presentation.
That was the clarity, because the impression I was receiving that we were looking for some kind of decision, and I certainly would like to hear from city staff on this matter. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further questions? Counselor McPhail?
Thank you. Drew, thank you for everything you do out there. It's a wonderful initiative. Question with the amendment, that what is the actual timeline? It says deferred to May 1st. Is that when construction would need to start? What kind of a timeline?
It's supposed to be completed by May 1st.
Completed by May 1st?
Yes. And that's not going to happen.
Okay.
I mean, given we're construction, even getting a firm to do that at this point. Again, we've been trying to tee up the BPI, and we're very, I mean, one thing we've been very good is paying attention with things like the American Recovery Act. We are also paying attention to, you know, other funding sources. But right now, the reason we're focused on the BPI, it is very actionable. We spent quite a bit of time negotiating with main Department of Transportation, and they are willing. A typical BPI is 30, or one-third split. That, given our situation as a nonprofit, it's a public infrastructure project several miles away from our campus, that they would go to bat to really cover half and then have the other half split between the city and the Ecology School.
Is there an estimate of how long the project would take to complete, based on the timing of funding?
The actual construction is maybe a month, start to finish, was my understanding. It really is the, and the challenge right now, we were willing, as Board Director Kathy Goodwin pointed out, we've already invested over $30,000 in preliminary design, and we were ready and willing to pay the $5,000 review fee from main DOT, and they won't do the review until we bring Saco onboard as part of the project. They were adamant. We really tried to say, hey, can you at least move it forward? Then we can go back to Saco with a final design. They said absolutely not.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor Johnston?
I don't have a question. It's just an overall comment. I think, and again, I don't have all the facts because, as you stated, there's been 29 some-odd meetings, but I think even when it started at council, I think that traffic was always going to be viewed as an issue, which is why later on in the process, it's the planning board that decided to add this condition, recognizing that it was going to be an issue. I think there was some discussion at the time about financial capacity and technical abilities with this particular turning lane. So it is, you know, a bit concerning to me that we're now coming back and asking the city to contribute to something that, while it's a great organization and all, we removed a substantial amount of tax dollars from that property when we allowed this use to locate there. I think, you know, additionally, while it's great that, again, I did suggest the trail, I don't think there was ever a requirement to add the parking. Could be, could be wrong with the planning board, added it later on, but I just find it hard to believe that this trail is creating the traffic problem. In reality, the traffic problem was always going to exist, and it's, you know, it seems like a bit of a Trojan horse here to use that trail as a reason that now the city needs to participate. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Berman?
Thank you. Do you have an estimate of how many of the left turns at that intersection, or sorry, how much of the traffic on that road is driven by the Ecology School? A proportion, a percentage, what the impact might be?
I mean, part of the, we disagreed with the traffic numbers. I mean, we spent nearly 20 years at Ferry Beach. We do controlled arrivals. We encourage carpooling. So those numbers, we never could get the planning board past the idea that actually this, you know, worst-case scenario, 100 cars all showing up within 15 minutes to take left-hand turn lanes, wasn't going to happen. But I get, you know, traffic warrants. They do studies, they do, and I definitely, I've seen several accidents. I could have brought some photos of accidents at that intersection that had nothing to do with the Ecology School. Yeah. And our thing, you know, with the, knowing that, say, like, the Hancock lumber on Route 1, that my understanding is that a BPI is moving forward with Hancock lumber in the city to potentially do a left-turn signal. So we do ask that, you know, a certain level of equity with other businesses that, when there are important public infrastructure projects, that we can work together on them.
Yeah, thank you. It seems to me that the city has a compelling interest in making sure the intersection is safe. I'd encourage us to look into this BPI mechanism.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Thank you very much for coming and presenting, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Brings us to item B, amendments to the business industrial zone permitted in conditional City Administrator Kenrath, are we going to have a presentation on this this evening from Planning and Economic Development, or one of the two?
I don't think we are anticipating one, but Jason or Molly, do you have any interest in coming up and doing a brief summary or update on this item?
Good evening, Mayor Doyle, members of the council. The application that you have before you was a petition submitted by a Saco property owner to, as a request to amend the zoning ordinance as it relates to BI zoning districts. The original request was to allow, I believe, five separate uses that are defined in the zoning code in that zoning district, and planning staff analyzed this request in relation to the terms which define the BI zoning district in the ordinance and concluded with the recommendation that, I believe, three of those uses, Molly? That three of those uses be, one be allowed as a principally permitted use and two as conditional uses because we concluded they were, in fact, compatible based on an evaluation of both that zoning district and the neighboring uses. So you can see, I believe, a detailed analysis that's focused on the verbiage in the ordinance in your packet, and the board did recommend that you adopt those amendments as recommended by staff. I will note, too, that the property owner who submitted the petition seemed to support the planning board's recommendation. So that's all I have is an introduction. Happy to answer any questions. And Molly Kirchhoff here, assistant planner, she did the bulk of the work on this, so she's here as well if you have any questions about the details.
Thank you very much. Counselors, this is, as you can see from the packet on page 17, this is scheduled for a public hearing on December 6th, or maybe it was, but it got tabled. I was not at the last meeting, so as I understand, this was a tabled item. So we may have to look at untabling at a future meeting. Oh, is this not tabled?
I can clarify.
Thank you.
Mayor Doyle, there were two zoning amendments on the agenda at the last city council meeting. The other one was similar, but it was supposed to be the final reading of the zoning uses and definitions amendment that has been working through the process. A motion was made during that final reading to add the recommendations that are currently before you, and it was at that point that that final reading was tabled until the December 6th meeting. Is that right, Brian? Yeah.
Thank you for that clarification. Any questions at this time for the city planner? Counselor Hatch?
Not a question, just a comment. And Molly, if you did all the work, I got to tell you, when I went through this packet, the clarity of the comparisons and the information as it was laid out in the packet, I personally found very useful and very focused. For somebody who has to review a lot of pages of a lot of stuff, I found it very, very user-friendly, if you will. So I just wanted to shout out that I appreciated that effort, and I hope you can continue to do that moving forward.
Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Yep, that's kind of what I was thinking, too. I really do appreciate how you've laid it out. I try to do a similar thing in my mind, but to actually see it laid out in paper is very appreciative, and I would hope we can continue it going forward. I don't have any specific questions for you. I guess, you know, I don't have too much to really add at this stage with it being new business. I think, though, you know, when I think toward comments that were made earlier by one of our public speakers, you know, I participated in a very lengthy planning process or zoning process. It took a better part of two years, and we did look at many of these requests previously that, too, had a very robust public participation process. So, well, I wouldn't say it's concerning, but maybe perhaps to me, you know, now, over the last year, I've seen several examples where particularly individuals don't like the result of that process, and we bring forward zoning amendment after zoning amendment. I think that it's, you know, important as we go forward with this and really all of these, that we keep a comprehensive plan in mind. I've yet, in that current comprehensive plan, I don't know about the one that staff is working on along with that committee, but nowhere in there have I ever found these uses suggested. I'm not saying they're not potentially valid use, I'm just saying that they've never been suggested. You know, me personally, I look at that area, and I know that when I went through it with the zoning revision committee, you know, we tried to maintain a harmonious zone, and I think many of these uses don't necessarily fit with the BI as it is today. So, again, you know, I guess I look forward to a robust. So again, you know, I guess I look forward to a robust conversation in the coming weeks. I certainly can see how maybe some of these fit, but, you know, certainly I still have problems with several of them, and I think staff did a pretty good job at laying out, you know, how they, how they viewed them. Now, planning board may not have agreed, but I think that, you know, like I said, staff did a good job at explaining how they can select. So again, I look forward to that discussion. Thank you.
Any question, any further questions for the city planner? At this time, I'm going to invite the petitioner, Linda Valentino, to come forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Linda Valentino. I live on the Boom Road in Saco, Maine. And first, I'd like to address the comment that no one ever suggested these uses. I attended several meetings when you had them over at People's Choice, other places. These uses were suggested many times. They did not proceed at that time, and my understanding is that there are many, many hundreds of items in that zoning ordinance that need to be changed on it. As you can see from even the last meeting, the city planner has items before you that are going to be handled. So I guess I don't look forward to lengthy, robust conversations over the coming weeks and months. I think that this is an issue that went before the planning board. It was unanimously voted to recommend to you. You have a motion currently on the floor that could be picked up if you wanted to. It was a tabled motion to add these three uses as recommended by the planning board, and this could be done right away. One of the reasons I didn't go to the planning board is the agenda item said changes to the industrial zone. If it had said clearly changes to the industrial zone and the BI zone, I would have attended that meeting. When I found out that the planning board at that meeting made changes to the BI zone, I said, I would like to see if I could also add my changes to that at the public hearing. I spoke before this council. I spoke before the planning board. I asked to have that included. You're already making motion, making changes to the BI zone. And when I was before you last time, everybody said, and I know you were not here, Mr. Mayor, everybody said, we're not going to vote on this tonight because it's going to the planning board tomorrow. Let's wait and see what the planning board says. The planning board had a public hearing. Nobody spoke against it. I spoke for it. Dick Lambert spoke for it. We went along with what the planner recommended, these three conditional uses to be added, and I can come back for several months and have robust conversations on this, or we could pick it up from the table, put it in with the other changes that you're already making to the BI zone, and have it all said and done at your next meeting in December. And I say that as respectfully as I can. If you want me to come back, I'll come back. 29 meetings, one people came, so I guess I don't feel bad. I just would say, I would, I believe it's possible you can pick up that tabling motion tonight, and you can put it in with your already recommended changes to the BI zone. There was no opposition. This is a business zone. It's not a residential zone. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions from the council? Consular Johnston?
It's fine.
Linda, I believe I was perusing Facebook, as many people do these days, and I happened to come across your, your profile for real estate. And you had put out a posting that said, what would you like to see in this location? And this is the location on Industrial Park. Can, can you just tell me what the most common, the most common of the, I think, 50-plus comments were for that post?
The overwhelming comments were for a food and drink or a convenience store. Pretty much everybody said they wanted a place to get a sandwich, and that was the number-one thing, and people kind of combined them. They wanted to pick up a loaf of bread. But we don't have convenience stores in here. That the planning board did not agree to, so it just would be food and drink, like a deli, where somebody could pick up a sandwich. And I understand other businesses may not want another sandwich place. If they have a sandwich place, and they may not want that. But I think that's a convenient place. We don't have anything in the industrial park. I've worked on that road. I've had three different offices on that road, and sometimes you just need a sandwich or a place to eat.
And is that the catalyst for why you're bringing some of these petitions forward to the planning board and to the council?
In all honesty, the catalyst has been, the building has been vacant since January 1st. I've had over 35 people come and look at this office, and none of the uses, not one person wants to build it just for an office building. I've had barber shops, beauty shops, nail supply, nail salons, massages. I had mentioned several times Bradley Street Deli wanted to go in there. There are many uses, and every single use was not permitted. Hence, I would have to come to you for a contract zone, to do a contract zone to put that person in. All I'm saying is that if there is this much of a demand, let's just change that zoning. You change the zone to a BI zone, which is a transitional zone from business to industrial. Let's include a few more businesses in there. I know I'm allowed to have a junkyard there. I know that's permitted, and I can put a junkyard, but I do not think that's the best use for the property.
Thank you. Any further questions?
I don't have a question. I have a statement. That's all right. All right, thank you.
Consular Johnston.
First of all, I didn't say anyone or no one suggested it. I said the comprehensive plan has never suggested it. Plenty of people. I was at that meeting, and I heard you and your husband make the comments about this. And again, I don't think people need to take this so personally. I haven't revealed how I feel about this one way or the other. I think what's important, though, is that we're not talking about a specific lot. Maybe the petitioner is, but we, as a council, need to be talking about the entirety of that zone, whether or not these uses are appropriate for all those lots, and what is the impact if every single one of them were to become these uses? And that's why I said we should have a robust conversation. Simple. And so I still look forward to that. And again, the outcome might very well be allowing restaurants or what have you, but there's a process to be had, not to backdoor this in the way it was, I don't want to say attempted, but the way it was presented two meetings ago. I think the public deserves the opportunity to weigh in on this, not just the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much for coming and presenting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
Does the council want to hear from any other presenters on this item? This item will be coming forward at a future meeting for your discussion. With that, that brings us to item 11 of the agenda. That is the administrative updates. City Administrator Kenrath.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick updates. Veterans Day. I'd like to thank everyone who helped organize this year's Veterans Day ceremony at Thornton Academy. It was a great turnout, some very good speakers, and it was overall a very successful event to recognize those who have served, and thank you all, to all the members of the public, who came out also to recognize this day. Also, a thank you for our, those involved in our comprehensive plan open house, which was also a great turnout, well-attended by the community, and I think also was inclusive of the public engagement aspect that we hoped to have had with this process. So thank you to Jason and Molly, who are here, as well as all the planning staff, as well as our consultants at StanTech for a very successful evening in engaging with the public on our comp plan revision. A parade of lights will be returning this year, December 4th, beginning at 6:00 p.m. In addition, we'll be having the Downtown Holiday Festival taking place from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. on December 4th, which will feature a number of children's activities and specials at downtown merchants, and hope to see everyone there as it comes back for 2021. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Only thing I would add is a thank you to Consular Purdy for emceeing the Veterans Day event. Thank you very much. With that, any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Okay. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment this evening? Consular Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Just a couple of things. Given the conversation this evening, both publicly and at the council level regarding the contract zoning situation, I would simply ask that the, that the city administrator make this a priority for not-too-distant future agenda, and I'm thinking weeks, not months. So as soon as we can get it back, I think we ought to give it its fair, fair look under the process that's prescribed under the city charter. And then, secondly, I did get a request from a constituent about some potentially, and I don't, I don't know the facts, but I'm just making, making mention of this unfilled board appointments that remain unfilled, so I'm not sure how to take action on that other than to make it, make us aware of that. And if you want to know specifics, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
To address those.
Any further council discussion and comment? Okay, moving on to item 13. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Consular Hatch?
Be it ordered that the city council enter into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title I, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, personnel matters and consultation with legal counsel.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consular McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call vote to add to our executive session. Consular Purdy?
Yes.
Consular Gunn?
Yes.
Consular Berman?
Yes.
Consular Hatch?
Yes.
Consular McPhail?
Yes.
Consular Johnston?
Yes.
6-0 at 7:54. Six zero at seven fifty-four.
Welcome back. Is there a motion to exit executive session?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch, discussion? Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes at 9:30. Brings us to item 14, report from executive session. Is there a report this evening? Counselor Purdy?
I believe the consensus was that we should have a council meeting next Monday, November 29th.
Report from executive session, suggestion we'll have a council meeting for November 29th to start at 6:30. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Counselor Hatch?
Second.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch, discussion? Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch, discussion? Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. With that, brings us to item 15. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor McPhail, is there a second?
I'll second.
Counselor Hatch?
Discussion?
Roll call vote to exit executive session, Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0. To adjourn at 9:32. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.